Okay. Oh, yep. There's Mark.
All right.
Where'd he go? Oh, there he is. Okay. Okay. Good to go?
Mm-hmm.
So I will call this a regular meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at seven oh two. And we'll begin with the pledge. The pledge will lead us to the flag.
Into the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, every day and justice for all.
We mute everybody. Okay. Um. Yeah, whatever works. So I think some people, I think you're muted, so if you need to talk, you're gonna have to unmute yourself and jump in. But we'll get through our agenda. So public input, I don't see any public, so we'll go right past that. And correspondence, we don't have any correspondence either. Election of officers. We can do that, or we can wait until we have everybody here, which includes John Mentee, who's not here tonight. I don't know how anybody feels if you're okay with waiting. I think we should do that, wait till John's here.
I agree.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. People here agree too.
Do we have a list of when our terms expire?
Um, yes, I can get that and have it next time. I think we'll be in some of Dave Olson's next year. All right, approval of meeting minutes. I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Dave Olson's second. Does any, anybody have any input, changes, comments on the minutes as presented by Kathy? Good? All in favor? I.
Well, abstain.
Okay, Roy abstains.
And David abstains.
Well, I have to abstain too.
Yeah, so two Davids and Roy abstain, so the two of us, Mentee and Gerald and Durkin were here last time, right? So we voted, we're good. Moving into our old business. Top of the list, the training range. So what's going on, Evan?
All right, so uh, we've had some very good progress. Actually, uh, I'm gonna let Mark uh kick us off here. He was out on site yesterday doing the punch list. So I'll let him um give us an update on what he saw out there. Um, and his reasoning by why he's not comfortable giving us a letter of substantial completion and what we need to do in order to get that letter from him in Colorado.
Good evening. Um. We uh, Colerona and I went out there yesterday and reviewed the the progress to date, and you know, it's coming along fairly well. Um. After the, after the visit, we got together and and uh, reviewed all of our findings and um, substantial completion is a point in the project when, when the owner is, can take substantial um of the building, and we don't feel that the facility is, is quite at that level yet. We have a number of major things that need to be done. I don't think they're gonna take a long time, but at the same time, we're not at that point yet. Um, for example, um you, you know, the sprinkler system is, for the range, for the most part, is installed. However, the final connection to the existing building is not made yet. So clearly, you know, it's not really operational. Um, and so I think that you, you know, it's not operational right now, and it's not being worked on currently because there's, there's some, we, we need to get heat in the range.
Right.
So getting the unit online is, is really the top priority. Um, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of work to get the sprinkler system operational, once we get heat in the range. But again, it's, it's, it's not at the point where it's substantially complete. Um. We uh, we did issue, uh, I guess what we're calling a punch list. Uh, even though we're not at substantial completion, it's a, it's a list of items that we saw out there that, that still need to be completed, still need to be corrected. Uh, and, and still need to be finished. So we sent that along to uh, to Evan and the team today, so. So I think we've uh you know, indicated what we think needs to be done, and and I think we'll uh, you know, we should, should see that substantial completion coming shortly.
Right, so we have the MAU uh, scheduled for startup with Aircon tomorrow morning sometime between eight and eight thirty. Hopefully all of that goes well, and that will be online shortly after then, we'll have uh, performance mechanical doing their commissioning of their um controls. And during that time, uh, Kevin, you could also have uh, HHC to be final connections. Um, I don't know if you've scheduled them, or if you're waiting to see if the startup goes well. Uh, but I think that we could probably get that sprinkler online, if not Friday, probably early next week. Um.
Yes, so um HHS, they're ready to go, just at like, uh, like a day's notice or two. So once the MAU is up running, everyone's happy that it's, you know, up and running and good. Uh, I can schedule these guys to come out and do the final tie-in to the building for the sprinkler.
Okay.
Is ESC scheduled to be there for tomorrow's startup?
Yes.
And does CES have remote access?
Yes.
Are we set up for credentials and everything?
So since the MAU is gonna be starting up tomorrow, I'm assuming all that conduit and all that which was supposed to run to the MAU, into the space, to the controls and all that is set, good to go.
Right, so con- uh Downs have done the conduit. It's performance and uh, and Action Targets guys that are pulling the cable and doing the final connections and need to do their own commissioning in of their control units.
So
They need to do that.
So that's not connected to the MAU, it's all the um, range equipment, et cetera? Or is some of it from the MAU?
It's from the MAU, yeah. So they have their own separate control box that's in the control room that goes to the MAU.
Right, okay.
And then there's one other control that goes, that ESC does, that goes back to the DM uh, EMS.
Okay. So is some of that still being yet done?
Right, so yeah.
Stop the MAU from being
Right, the MAU could just run.
Okay. Good. So we're not anywhere near being able to do training quite yet. That's gotta wait for the MAU to go through whatever they have to then.
Right.
Did Action Target do the, there was one track that was faulty that get repaired? Did they send somebody out to do that?
There was somebody out there last week. I don't know if it actually got repaired. I reached out to Lieutenant Durkin earlier this week.
So Evan, uh, just to cut in, I was on site yesterday with Mark and uh, Colerona, and I noticed that that track on line number two was not fixed yet. You can see that the thread of rod was still bent at the uh, you know, fifteen degree of when the, the trolley uh, hit it. So that's still gotta be addressed. And then Lieutenant Durkin also mentioned um that each of the lines have a um, like an iPad that swings up, and right now um, there's like a, there's like a rubber stopper that's supposed to prevent the iPads from hitting the ceiling, so that's, those need to be adjusted. That was another thing he pointed out. So I think we still have some items to take care of.
Yep.
And those are the things that Action Target needs to take care of, correct, Kevin?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, well, Lieutenant Durkin was able to confirm was that uh, Signet was out uh, as well, and Signet did complete their uh, their scope of work and the card reader was working.
Okay.
So when I reached out to him, he confirmed that was done, but he didn't confirm that Action Target stuff and other captains able to confirm that.
So the, that was put together, oh, here's Durkin. Um. So the punch list that was put together um, which is more of a, this is stuff that needs to get completed, not really a punch list, cause we're not running that long. Um. Be taken care of. I don't know, you or Kevin, like will be taken care of soon, quickly?
Yeah, so I, I, I took a look at the list that um, Mark and um, the gentleman from Colerona put together. Um, most of the items, uh, I'm not too concerned with. I did pass them along to our subcontractors, and they're gonna take a look at it and respond accordingly, whether it's um, you know, a response or corrective action, so I'm just waiting for them to you know, give me what they need to.
And Kevin did kick over some stuff to me too, which I passed along.
So we're gonna need to be on Action Target, make sure they get back, somebody back here to
Exactly.
Yeah.
Which we know that they're coming back out because Performance Target, or Performance can't long needs to come out and do their control work as well, so we do know that they're, they're still having
Yeah. And, but you haven't heard from them yet, when they're gonna become, Action Target?
No.
Okay. And then I had a question just from last meeting when we talked about if you found out that we're getting the check from Eversource.
Yeah, so Eversource actually needs to see that unit running.
So we gotta wait, yeah, okay. Do they send somebody out, or do they do it remotely? All right, so you'll be in touch with them once it's running and tweaked and et cetera. All right, got it, good.
So I have a question
Sure.
For for the MAU, there's gonna be alarms. Have we developed a list of who will get emailed if the unit is alarmed?
No.
Okay, so somebody should think of that, Lieutenant Durkin, Fugner, maybe beyond it, Libertini.
And Kathy, I, I was meant to do that. I just got confirmation tonight, like at four o'clock, that they're coming out at eight o'clock tomorrow morning, and I forgot to put you on that list.
Who's coming out?
Uh, Aircon to start, start up the MAU.
Start up, okay.
Right, I meant to put you on that list, cause I'm sure that the Town of Bethel facilities guys wanna be on that list, or be on the email list as well.
Right, and they could, they could set up a, a group email so that everybody gets it. Particularly with it being unoccupied.
Right.
And for some reason, if it wasn't de-aminified or something like that, you want the alarms to go out. I, I recommend that you talk to ESC, but at least put CES on it, the commissioning agent.
Okay.
You gotta add CES, who it will be, um, but I would put uh, ESC, because typically with these things, particularly when the range equipment is kinda talking to the honeywell system. Takes a little while to get the bug solved. And we are into damp weather, so.
John, John, do you think there should be call?
Um. That would be ideal. Um. I would think with you know, with the, the shortlist that I have, as far as three people from the PD, CES, ESC, and then Kathy selected maybe two people on the town side.
Mm-hmm.
I think that should cover it.
Okay.
But if they wanted to put a you know, I don't know how you would do that. I don't know if the PD has, like our buildings have a monitoring company.
Right.
So our, they, they go off a list until they reach a live person. That's up the PD if they wanna go to that.
I usually give it to Heather Burns. She's the one that usually handles that kind of stuff for me.
Okay.
About who's gonna do what for alarms.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just thinking because
Maybe there's
middle of the night.
Middle of the night.
Emails, emails aren't gonna
Aren't gonna be on, or, yeah, or
Right, right. Well, that, since the building itself is occupied twenty-four seven, that's different than the range, which isn't.
Right.
Something, something goes wrong in the building, someone's there on duty and gets taken care of.
Well, I mean, if they ask at the PD, it's only your twenty-four seven.
So
they could just walk down and walk down.
So maybe go to dispatch, but I guess we'll have to talk to police department about how they wanna handle.
Yeah, right.
From their end, and then who else gets notified? ESC and, cause ESC's doing maintenance now, the town, or, yeah. Okay, yeah, well, that's good. Put together a list.
But definitely CES, cause they're the commissioning agent, so if they see those alarm come in, they can research as part of the commissioning process, that everything got corrected.
Okay.
Why do we see the recen- receive the alarm?
Right.
And what did they do to correct it?
Right, so within that first year, when they're monitoring everything, definitely, okay. Is there anything else that you need to let us know about, or anybody have questions?
When's the roof party?
The roof party? Did you put a tree on the roof?
Lieutenant Durkin, when's the roof party?
Yeah, no roof party.
No roof party?
So, um yeah, he's like, don't wake me up. He's working, he's working, he's working. Oh, we can't hear you, you're muted. He's probably patrolling. Kathy will unmute you.
I love that I can't.
Can you?
I don't look like I can.
Oh. Oh. Whatever. You can't unmute someone else, it says, all right. Well, you're muted. If you don't, if you wanna talk to us, unmute yourself, otherwise just keep listening. So um, Kevin, do you have anything else that we need to know about or need to deal with?
No, nothing I can think of. I mean, we're, we're in good shape. Um, we're just, some hazards we need to clean up, just like on any other construction project.
Right. Okay, and then Mark Allen, do you have anything else from what you saw out there yesterday?
No, I'm uh
No, I'm uh
the encouraged
Encouraged to
the way the building looked.
Building looked.
Yeah.
Yeah. It
And then I guess we're still waiting on consistent warm weather to coat the block on the outside.
Yeah, we're getting fifty degrees days, but
But it's raining.
Right, and it's gonna freeze next week.
Yeah, it's gonna freeze tomorrow. Yeah, and so do you have anything else for us?
Uh, just invoices, yeah.
Okay. So any questions before we move on to invoices and other things that we need to deal with and approve? Everybody, anybody, anybody? Good? All right, so we have two invoices and a um not really a change order, but it's just saying that we approved the change order already and getting a signature on the contract change order. So what do you want to do first? We got Downs, we got that.
Yeah, there's more than that. Yes.
Invoices, that's all I saw at the
More than that.
Okay.
Um. But yeah, we have a start with the January rack.
Is that from Downs?
Yeah.
Okay. So is that number five?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve um, Downs Construction Application for Payment number five dated January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And the amount of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and nineteen cents.
Second.
Very. Dave Olson's second. Um, this is part of all the stuff that's at the um, the meeting attachment, et cetera. So does anybody have any questions on this? All good, all in favor? I opposed. Done. What else you got?
And yes, this was the requisition four that was
So this is the, yeah, so this is change order number nine, which we already approved. But I have to have this signed by Dan to approve the change in the contract amount, change to the number of the GMP. So we have to get it signed, but we'll approve it too. So I make a motion that we approve Downs Prime Contract Change Order number four, which includes change order proposal number nine, which we already approved, and it's already signed. Um, the amount of the change was one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. And that particular change order was to have the supports on the outside to hold up the ductwork for the MAU.
Second.
Second.
So I got a second from whoever. All in favor? I opposed. Done, and I muted down signature.
Right.
So if Kevin is still there, um I just need a down signature on this. You can send it to Evan, and he'll send it to me, and then I'll get Dan to sign it.
Okay, I'll take care of that in the morning.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
I have a um network synergy.
Yep.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve network synergy invoice number one, three, eight, four, five, seven dated February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, and the amount of seven hundred and, or nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Dave Olson's second. Any questions? All in favor? I
All right.
Opposed. Done. Is this all of theirs, or is this, they still have a little invoice yet, or?
Uh.
I think they might still have a little bit.
Right.
So what else we got? I didn't see any of the rest of that up.
Yeah, so we actually, we got the offsetting Action Target with, for the sprinkler work. So we put that with the, the Downs sprinkler work and the Action Target sprinkler to offset each other. Remember, we had that, we had the Downs one last meeting. And then we got, but we didn't consider it because we didn't have the offsetting one from Action Target yet.
A change order, or a yeah.
Yeah, so we
So, and I didn't see that when I looked in the documents.
So we have Downs change order number eleven, which was correcting the work that Action Target messed up.
Okay.
And we held off on approving this, and so we got a credit change order from Action Target. And we have that now. We got that from them late Monday, so I uploaded it late Monday.
So if we approve the Downs change order, does it change the GMP?
Yes.
Targets.
Changes their contract.
Close down.
Right.
Okay. All right, so which one should we do first?
So I have the Downs one up.
All right, so I will make a motion that we approve Downs change order number, you said eleven?
Yes.
Um, to correct uh, sprinkler, sprinkler pipe rework in the amount of two thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. So I got a second from Dave Olson. Any questions?
Yeah, I don't recall us talking about this.
We did. But we didn't have all the documents.
What, what did they do to the sprinklers?
So when Action Target went on site, they, Downs had already, their subcontractor had already put all the sprinklers in place.
With the sprinkler heads.
Sprinkler heads, and when Action Target went there to hang their baffles, they moved them out of the way and spun them in a loosening direction. And Downs had already pressure tested these.
So they have to get pressure tested, yes.
I don't, I don't recall us talking about this at all, but
Yeah, yeah, we did.
Yeah.
But we didn't have the paperwork all finished.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, we, we had Downs.
That's fine, they're washing each other out.
Yeah, they're washing each other out, yeah.
So, but good that you know, cause we did talk about it a bunch of meetings ago, that it happened, and then that we can't forget, what do we have to do to get, what's the amount to fix it, et cetera?
We never actually put this up for discussion, the paperwork up for discussion, because we didn't wanna discuss it, so we had the
I mean, I never heard this, cause I never heard this, but
As long as we wash each other out.
Yep, yeah.
And that works out okay on how we do our numbers?
Yes.
Cause it will
Yeah, their, their, their amount goes up, the G, the GMP goes up and Targets goes down.
So on a big spreadsheet, it just
Zeroes out, yeah, okay. Okay, um, so any other questions on this? All in favor? I
Uh.
I opposed. Done with that. And then the Action Target change order is gonna be big, because I can't see this. I'll make a motion that we approve Action Target change order. Is there a number on it?
Three.
Number three? Uh, and the amount of minus two thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Woo-hoo.
Woo.
Take two.
And anybody wanna second it?
Second.
Second.
Dave Olson's second. So any questions on this? Hey, all in favor? I
I, I.
Opposed, done. Would you say that was number three you said?
Yeah.
Um, so that's David getting back in. Okay, so then what else do we have? So, okay, those two, I don't know why I didn't, maybe I didn't go in today to get them. Did you put them up?
I put them on Monday evening. I got this at like five o'clock, six o'clock Monday evening.
I thought I looked, well, actually, I was printing some of them today when I was here, and I didn't see them. So I'll look again. And I looked on the thing that Kathy sent, set up. So Kathy has now set up a shared drive, on the shared drive, a separate drive for our meetings. And so anything that is gonna, part of the meeting goes in there. And then each meeting has a folder, I guess it's a folder by the date of the meeting. So a bunch of the ones we did tonight were on last meetings too, but we didn't do them last meeting, so we didn't get them in time. Yeah, okay. So that's it for invoices, and the budget is kinda the same now, right?
It is, yeah. We, we really didn't get anything that
And this doesn't change it?
Right.
These two change orders, okay.
And the things that we had from last week that we didn't consider, I had put into the budget that we looked at
Right.
last time.
So we still have about twelve thousand, I think, contingent. Yeah. Okay. All right, does anybody else have anything on the training range? Before we move on? Things good? All right, good. We'll move on. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, anybody else who's here, just for the training range?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yep, goodnight. So they won't come back until the list is, is pretty complete, and you, you know, you can get a letter of substantial completion, right? Yeah, okay. But it will be Mark again and Colerona and everybody, Downs and Were you there or no?
No.
But hopefully things go well with the startup of the MAU.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Get that document out of there.
Yeah.
So is everybody, since it's just us now, is everybody pretty clear on what you need to do when Kathy sends the invite out, or do we need to look at that? You got it. You got it.
Okay.
Everybody's got it, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
So when you, when you open the email that Kathy sends, right at the top, where it says invitation to the meeting, there's the three boxes where you check yes, no, and maybe. And you just check one of those, and then
And I think even the yes box, not to interrupt Nancy, but I think even the yes box has a dropdown arrow on it. So if you wanted to get fancy, you can even say that you're gonna attend remotely.
Oh, okay.
I think that's what I saw briefly, but if not, just hit the yes button.
And then and then you're able to go in at a later date. I've been doing, I had Kathy show me how to go in, like a week, you know, three or four days later three or four days later and see who's replied, because I was trying to keep track of, do we have a forum or not?
Yep.
Showed me how to find that. So I found it. Now, that will show everybody that said yes or no, or that didn't respond at all. And one person said maybe. However, he said he was gonna be here and then he ended up with a work thing. So he emailed to say he wasn't gonna be here, because if I don't go back in and check the list and I think he's gonna be here and we need him for a forum, we need to know that kind of stuff. I think you can go back in and change your answer. A no or maybe, but then we gotta keep checking the list to make sure we know who's gonna be here, who's not. And then, like I said, the documents to be considered for the meeting, were they part of the attachments or not anymore? They just go into the shared drive?
It's the one with the shared drives.
So the shared drive, we had a shared drive, it's a Google Drive for school projects. We set one up for the training range. Their, Dr. Carver set one up for the high school HVAC. Now there's a fourth one that Jack, Kathy set up just for meetings. So any documents for the meetings are gonna be in there if you want to review the documents. Evan's not gonna be sending them out as attachments anymore because there's, no need to do that. So make sure you go in there and see are there invoices, are there change orders, et cetera? Um, maybe a couple of times we can, you know, remind everybody or maybe you'll put it in the email, remember to go look at the.
There was an issue too sometimes if you don't have a Gmail account, it doesn't always work for some reason.
Okay.
So you, if you don't have a Gmail account, you might want to get one just so you can access, it's easier. Just you have to send.
I just lost you. I just lost you.
Oh, do you hear me now?
Yeah, gotcha.
We're, we're still here.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we're here.
Good.
Uh, I mean, it's the, the thingy's going, so it's, we're making.
We're making.
Yeah, okay.
But the person who is helping me with the, the IT side of it, he basically is putting on the town calendar, he has a link to the meeting on the town calendar and all of the documents will be on the town calendar. So if you can't access the drive for whatever reason, or access the meeting because you lost the email, you can always go to the town website, to the town calendar and click on the link for the meeting and you should have everything there.
And the recording gets put up there too. So you can go to that Google Drive and the, once, actually I think it goes there automatically once we're done. It goes up pretty quickly. Yeah, it just pops up there as part of those, that folder for a particular meeting, the recording is there if you need to use it. Alright, uh. So everything else, Johnson and Rockwell Schools, there's nothing new to report. Haven't heard anything from, um, Dr. Carver, so I'm guessing that audit is still in process and we haven't heard anything more yet. Um, the high school HVAC, again, nothing new approaching March. Hopefully they'll make their decisions in March or we get something. But again, nothing new to report there. And then municipal center locker room renovations. I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Rachel McGrath, the Director of Parks and Recreation. And we took some of the older plans with us, went down there, checked it all out, and she kind of has a little bit of a different view than what we were looking at and what, um, they were looking at originally. Basically saying, yes, the locker rooms need to get an upgrade. They're how many million years old? But they don't feel, she's not feeling like they need a huge locker room. And so are there ways, other ways of using that space for something else in the building for Park and Rec or whoever else? And I had a chat with Dan Carter today, letting him know all of this. And so we're gonna kind of have to mull it over a bit, but also perhaps have a meeting of whoever and see how are we gonna look at that? How are we going to get the renovations to the actual locker room areas? They don't need a big locker room with lockers and all. You need some toilets, a couple of showers, some sinks, but not a huge space like they have been looking at doing. It doesn't get used as much. Um, and then Park and Rec definitely needs storage for all the different programs they do, et cetera. And maybe it means looking at the whole building, well, parts of the building. And what else do we need to do? What else do we need in the building? So before we rush off and start blasting things apart down there, we gotta have a plan.
What was the purpose of the shower? Is it emergency shelter or like?
It's more for a shelter because the, Rachel was saying that the programs that they have now, even if they're, you know, an exercise program or whatever, people aren't really using showers for that. And they don't even offer the showers for that kind of thing right now because they're kind of iffy. If you remember being down there, however, a couple of years ago, the last time we went down there, they're, they're, they work. I'm sure if somebody, you know, in the middle of the last storm we had three years ago, people were glad to get a shower. They're clean, they're just old. They're 50 or more years old.
So the funding or nothing is tied to, because you're doing it as shelter?
It could be like, like the steep grant that we were trying to get. If we do something, you know, we want to have plans in place to be able to go ahead and go for a steep grant again. Yet we want to have plans be specific, like if, you know, this is the locker room space now, but we only need this much, two, two showers. We gotta find out too from building codes, how many toilets we need for the entire building. So since there's bathrooms on all the different floors and we added bathrooms in the lobby, we need fewer in the locker room, which means hopefully not having a jackhammer up the floor. So we do want to have it usable for a shelter and usable, you know, if necessary for other things, but, um.
Maybe there's a possibility there's a required amount you have to have.
Yeah, based, based on the size of the gym.
For the, for a shelter or for the, for the building?
For the, for the, the, uh, toilets.
Yes, there were. I think codes said certain amount, which is why we were having to jackhammer up the floor to add toilets to stay with that. Now we have more toilets.
Yeah, but it may not, they may not count if it's a gym area.
Right. So we, we will.
So do we have money for this or we have money to do a design?
We have money, we have money to start a design. What we need is to have an idea of what we want to do. So if we go to an architect and say, this is what we want to do, they're gonna say it's gonna cost X amount to finish up those plans or redo those plans, whichever.
And then once we have an idea, we, we're gonna go for grants or the town's gonna put up one here.
Probably a combination. If we can do it, as we talked about, um, in the steep grant, we talked about doing it in sections, like do the two locker rooms, do storage areas and other times. Um, but we need a plan overall, plan for that because there's sprinklers involved and, um, electrical, other plumbing, et cetera. You know, you have to move all that stuff around. You gotta know where you're moving it to. And in looking at it overall, sprinklers, things like that, does it make sense to do it all at once? Just so you don't have to be busting walls open again or whatever? Or do we do it in smaller sections? But we need a little input from some of the professional planner to help us with that. So that's where we are with that. Hopefully we'll start getting some more info from um, both Park and Rec and Dan about which way are we gonna go with this? Because we can't really do much until that decision is made.
Nancy, I'm glad, I'm glad you're doing that, Dan. I'm glad you're doing that, Dan.
Yeah. Well, it was interesting to me that Rachel said, well, let's go down and look at it. And we were sitting in, on one locker room, the, which is the, called the women's locker room. It's full of shelves. It's just floor to ceiling, wall to wall shelves, where Park and Rec stores everything, camp stuff, whatever. The other side, which is the men's locker room, there's a small cage that was put in by EMS and Tom Gallagher when they started receiving all kinds of supplies during COVID. So there's masks and gloves and shields and all kinds of stuff in there. And does that stay a storage for that sort of emergency stuff or does it get moved? We don't know. But she and I were sitting in a locker room that was, you know, way bigger than this room, going, we don't.
Yeah, what, what do we need? Yeah, that's. What do we need? Yeah, that's.
You know, the kids come in and play basketball. They're not gonna, they need to go to the bathroom, but they don't need to take a shower.
Right. Really, the showers would really be for more of a, uh, shelter, emergency shelter use.
Yep. Which is the big reason why we started looking at it to begin with.
Right.
Yeah. Because using, using, um, we checked in, we thought if the track and field house had showers, they might, that might be an alternate shelter, but they don't have showers, so. Um, and even with kids or even adults coming in for basketball or exercise where they don't go in and take a shower, they put the clothes on, they go home, you know, they put their jacket on, they go home. They don't come here and take a shower. So if we can get away with a smaller space and whatever number of toilets we might need, sinks, et cetera. Um, that would help less expensive, so.
Nope.
Alright, we'll keep looking at this and where we go with it. Yeah, wants to make the motion to switch in.
I make a motion with your second.
Zero seconds. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
See y'all. Goodnight.